Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June 13. We had a work session at 7:00 and begin our regular session now. And we have a number of guests tonight for two different important reasons. We are going to start with the swearing-in ceremony of a new police officer, Officer Joseph Sayetta. Let me invite Police Chief Eric Rutzner to the podium to introduce this great opportunity for the Village of Pleasantville and for Joseph Sayetta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, good evening, Mayor, chair, Village trustees, Village Administrator Morrissey, members, family and friends of the Pleasantville Police Department and the Pleasantville community. So I'd like to take a few minutes tonight to introduce our newest officer, Joseph Sayetta, to the board and to the community. And in order to do that, I think it's important that we look back a little bit on the hiring process that we went through. Whenever a new police officer is hired in a municipality, there are two options. Either the officer can be hired new and be sent to the academy, or potentially taken as a transfer from a different agency. So in Mr. Sayetta's case, Officer Sayetta's case, he's coming from his most recent full-time police job in another jurisdiction here in Westchester County. And as we go through the process, it's very important for us to make sure that we're hiring the right person. A job this size really doesn't have the opportunity to make mistakes on hiring. It's critical for us to take every hire that we make seriously. And so we do a number of different things in order to make sure that happens. Obviously, first and foremost, we go back and we speak to some of the people who know him best, either personally or professionally. Some of the words that we commonly found, people used to describe Joe were driven, composed, proactive, and helpful. And many people, especially his colleagues at his previous department, reported on his desire and his, it's in his personal nature to become part of the community, to work with the community. And so we thought that was very important and a critical step in our hiring process. Then we look at the officer's resume. And so Officer Sayetta has been a police officer for about two years. And in that time, most officers are just learning really how to be a police officer on their own, how to handle calls, how to deal with the public. But in this time, Officer Sayetta has gone to a number of other training schools. That's obviously a benefit for us as it brings some extra training in. There will be some trainings that we will not have to send him to. But it also spoke, we believed, to his desire to learn, his thirst for knowledge, and his desire to make himself a better police officer. Many of the schools that he attended, he did on his own time. And so it wasn't as if he was chosen from a group of police officers. He took the time and went and did these things on his own to make himself better. So some of the schools, excuse me, that he's attended, he's been to a number of FBI photography schools and the New York State Criminal Investigators course. These are very high-level schools. These are schools that you have to show a great deal of aptitude to get through. And as a young officer, you might expect that that would be the kind of thing that a young officer would want to be trained on, right? You know, handling crime scene photography, or potentially becoming, you know, training yourself to be a detective. But other schools that he's also attended included the Crisis Intervention School, which we've talked about many times here in this room, about our community's commitment to sending officers through that school. He supplemented that with a Crisis Intervention for Youth School. So we thought that was a particularly poignant decision on his part to attend that school. Additionally, he is a domestic violence investigation instructor. So he is actually qualified to teach other officers how to handle those types of investigations. And just to speak to the breadth of his knowledge and his training, he also went to a property and evidence room management school, which, again, not the kind of thing you would expect an officer with a very little amount of time on the job to think of to go to. But in doing so, he makes himself more of an asset to his department. And so we obviously recognized that this was, his resume spoke for itself when we went over it. So his commitment to a wide variety of learning and willingness to follow a different path to achieve his goals have made him a strong candidate. But like I said, the comments that we got from his, from his, the people he worked with, the people that he knew, his commitment to not only his community but also to people outside of the community, being willing to be helpful, being willing to extend himself, we thought he was somebody who we were very anxious to make sure that we had the opportunity to hire. In addition, I'd just like to say, hiring is tricky in general for people in all walks of life. But in municipal government, hiring is especially tricky because of the requirements of the bureaucracy that go along. And so I just want to take the opportunity to thank Village Administrator Morrissey and Village Clerk Alyssa Hochstein for all of the help that they did. It's been a process, and everyone has remained steadfastly committed to making sure that we bring in the best candidates as quickly as possible and get them out serving in the community. So at this point, I'd ask Mr. Mayor if you could come forward. Joe, if you want to step up. And we do have a tradition here where the significant other of the person who is here, so, Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind.
The significant other gets to poke you with a pin if she so desires. One of the great pleasures of my job is to welcome folks like you into our realm. Obviously, you've come extremely well recommended, the chief, the lieutenant, and all the folks here in the department are here behind you and look forward to having you as a member of our force. So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joseph Sayetta.
I, Joseph Sayetta.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
The Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duty of police officer.
Duty of police officer.
For the Village of Pleasantville.
For the Village of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome to Pleasantville. (applause)
Welcome.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Nicole, nice to meet you.
Welcome to the family. So in order to make that official, we'll just jump ahead and ask trustee Alvarez to read Resolution Number 165.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees, based upon recommendation of the Chief of Police, hereby appoint Joseph Sayetta to the Police Officer job title 134 Police Officer, Fourth Grade, at a salary of $76,802 effective June 14, 2022. Said appointment is subject to a probationary period of minimum of 52 weeks and can be extended to a maximum not to exceed 78 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Welcome, sir.[565.62][565.62](applause) All right. Thank you. Those of you who are here for that event are welcome to enjoy the rest of our exciting meetings, but we will not be offended if you depart.
Okay, Karen, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Karen, welcome.
So next up on our list tonight is an event that has always been an annual event, but in the world of the pandemic, has been less than annual, and we are delighted to be back again with five members of our high school community who have joined us tonight as the Pleasantville International Association ambassadors for 2022. So these are young people who elect to go overseas in the summer and to visit other countries, to frequently live with families in those countries, to participate in a work project, or a study project, or a teaching project. It varies all across the board. And then they return here, and a part of the quid pro quo is to have a community behind you. You need to come back and tell us about it. So it is my pleasure to invite each of you. Let me just move our little camera over here. We have a certificate for you, but we also have, what have we got, Eric? Hats?
Pleasantville hats.
All right. Can one of you guys assist with the hats?
There you go.
Come forth. So we're giving you this certificate, suitable for framing, and we hope you will, and then this Pleasantville hat with the idea that in these other countries, you'll wear a Pleasantville hat, carry the flag, it'll be like this Two Leopards bag, or take a picture in an iconic spot, wearing the hat. And I am confident that you'll end up in conversations in the far-flung places you're going to about Pleasantville, and you'll come back and report about those conversations back to us. I can report, now quite some years ago, my own daughter was a PIA ambassador and went to Costa Rica, as is the case tonight for Jessica. So I know where from I speak. The decision to do this is not only full of enthusiasm, but a certain amount of courage to jump on a plane and head out into the uncharted distant globe and to live in a different place, in a different culture for a period of time. So I am mightily impressed by all of you who do it. I have been every year, and I look forward to hearing your stories when you come back. So is Trey Persons here, headed to Korea? Come on up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kate Maroney, Ecuador. We have an expert on the subject, and trustee Paul Alvarez.
From there, that's awesome. I'm going there in August.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
Maybe he'll see you.
Yeah.
Where's he going?
I'm going to Ecuador.
Nice.
Clara Nielsen-Papisch, headed to France.
Where in France are you going?
I'm going to Brittany.
Oh, nice.
So we've got our Francophile here also.
Yeah, she, she was in my French class briefly.
Jessica Seacrest, Costa Rica.
Excited.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And Sophia Vecchiarrello, Puerto Rico. There you have it. Once a year, we gin up the Pleasantville Department of State. In my unanointed role as the Secretary of State, I look forward to sending out these five ambassadors and hearing what you all have to say. So have a great time, have an exciting time, find out about the rest of the world, and come back and tell us. It's an understatement to say we need more of that, and you guys are leading the way. Thank you all. All right, you too are welcome to stay the rest of the meeting, but it doesn't get more exciting than it's already been.
Unless you want to discuss leaf blowers.
Hats is a good idea.
Those aren't better than the bags.
All right. Next up on our agenda is a continuation of the public hearing concerning introductory Local Law 3 of 2022 concerning seasonal limitations on fuel-powered motorized leaf blowers. Is there a motion to reopen the continued public hearing?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back. We meet again. There have been some, a lot of discussions on various aspects of this whole thing, and there's also been an ongoing discussion with a couple of different entities, including the school district in particular, about the problem they have with the organic fill material from the turf field which rises in heavy rain. If I got that right, Eric?
That's correct.
Long story short, it requires some heavy-duty work to redistribute that, and they have sought, and the law currently provides, an exemption for the school district in the circumstance that they need to redistribute the fill on the turf field. Do you want to add anything? Which one is it? This one?
Do you want me to give an overview?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the third public hearing. Some of you may already know that, for an issue that has been ongoing for many years at this point. There was a big effort to pass some kind of legislation back in 2011, I believe. And so this has been going on for a long time. But just to catch you up to date, we have made a couple of amendments to the proposed law in response to some of the public comment that we received. The proposal originally was the law, for the law to go into effect starting this summer. In response to some of the public comment we've received, we are now proposing that it would go into effect next spring instead of this summer to allow people more time to adjust, to allow people time to, you know, purchase equipment if they need to do so, or adjust their practices accordingly. We originally had a two-year exemption for the golf course at the country club, and we got a lot of objections to that, both on the side of those who were in favor of legislation and those who were against it. And so we decided, given that we are essentially giving everybody a year's preparation time, that we would remove that exemption. The other change that we have proposed, because a lot of the complaints that we have received are about the noise issue, of course, there are a number of different issues, right, with leaf blowers. There's air pollution, there's the carbon footprint piece. Noise is the one that we've heard the most about, and since we are proposing, A, to put off the law for a year, and B, noise being the biggest issue, the other slight adjustment we're proposing is to slightly extend the quiet time on weekends and holidays. So currently, landscaping as equipment is permitted from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on weekends and holidays. And so currently, we're proposing to change that from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So it's a minor change.
And sooner than next year, right?
And that would go into effect, yes, thanks, that would go into effect once we, you know, if we pass the legislation. So that would, could go into effect this summer. Any questions about the legislation that's being proposed?
Comment from the board before we engage anybody in the?
Just one point of clarification. I'm not sure the law that we are looking at is written that way.
It is.
That one part of it goes into effect now, it is?
The time would go effect in a year, but we can amend it accordingly to?
Oh, okay, yes.
To have that take effect immediately.
Yeah, the idea would be for that to go into effect now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just have to change that.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that.
So we'd want to amend it to start when the law starts, right?
When it's filed with the Secretary of State.
Right, right.
Which would still be probably a month.
Oh, one other thing, you know, so one of the things that has come up at these public hearings is the fact that, A, many municipalities in Westchester County already have some kind of legislation in place to regulate leaf blowers. The most common one is similar to what we're proposing, which is no gas-powered leaf blowers during the summer months. But there are other versions as well. And this is a cultural shift, you know, it's a technological shift, but it's also a cultural shift that is sort of gaining momentum. California has recently banned the sale of gas-powered lawn equipment that's going to go into effect, I think, a couple of years from now. There are also three laws being proposed on the state level. There's one that has currently passed in the Senate and the Assembly, and that I believe is on the governor's desk right now. And that one would be a rebate program for electric landscaping equipment. You may know that we have recently had a rebate program in the village to allow people to convert from gas to electric lawn mowers and leaf blowers, which incidentally has been very popular. But we don't have the funds that would really sort of address the problem for, on a professional scale. But that is something that the state is looking into, and it looks very likely that that's going to pass, too. There's also a proposed law to ban the sale of gas-powered landscaping equipment, equivalent to what California is doing. And then there's a third law that is being proposed to place a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers as well. So just so that you know, get, have an idea of what is being proposed on the state level as well.
So we've received, as most of you know, lots of input in the previous two sessions, as well as some informal sessions. Since, we've also received a bunch of emails, and I think all of us continue to get some feedback from people on the street. I will say, one question that has arisen in some conversations I've had is whether commercial-quality electric blowers are actually quieter. There is clearly a carbon emission issue that's addressed by an electric blower, but some folks have argued that commercial electric blowers are not quieter, and that the issue may remain that if a landscape company typically arrives with two, or three, or four blowers arrives, having converted to electric, that it won't be any quieter. So that's a matter that we're digging into a little bit right now. So anybody else on the board want to comment? Before I invite anybody else?
Well, I would just respond to that, that, you know, I agree we will dig into that more. You know, the people that I've spoken to have indicated that they are quieter, certainly the homeowner-grade ones are quieter. But one resource that we may go to is an organization called Quiet Communities, that has, an organization that has also partnered with Sustainable Westchester on these issues.
All right. Comments from anybody in the audience? Come on up and give us your name and address, if you would.
My name is Eileen West. I live in Foxwood. Foxwood is 35 acres. It's lovely, it's leafy, it's grassy, and the leaf blowers are noisy, and the smell from the leaf blowers are, is atrocious. And I would be very, very much in favor of a ban on fuel-powered leaf blowers because it's, the quality of life, you know, wherever you might live, is very important. And I think really that this kind of destroys it. You're walking along and you hear these loud, loud noises, you smell the gas, and it's just, it's, it's not pleasant for Pleasantville.
Do you, do you know, Eileen, whether the Foxwood Board is sympathetic to this question?
You know, I don't know, because fortunately, I am not on the board anymore. I'm just speaking as a resident.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you. You, sir.
My, my name is Colvinona, and I just wanted to ask the board, how many of you guys have actually operated a leaf blower? Okay, that's, that's my question. The, I too have operated leaf blowers, and I will give you my testimony, just my own opinion. I recently bought an electric-powered leaf blower. The, I will tell you this, I've had leaf blowers where I work on aircraft for a living, so I'm used to loud noises and fumes. Okay, I know exactly what you're talking about. So my question, my example to you is, I start this thing, okay? Boom, boom, right? And then you get it, and what is the first thing they do? Like you're on a motorcycle, boom, 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 boom. So it makes it louder. I happen to have purchased one, and I love the thing because?
Electric.
It's electric. And I put it down, and you hit the button, and it blows. Okay? My personal experience, they are quieter. If you want to, we do in aviation, we do hearing tests every year. And if we are around decibels that are higher than a certain level, we are required to wear earplugs and ear protection. So if you want to know whether they're louder or not, there is test equipment out there that will tell you definitively whether they are or not louder than gas blowers. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
While you're up there? So you love it. What about the usage of it? Power of like getting the leaves out and trying to do the main purpose?
Well, as a homeowner, I'm not, I'm not in the industry, obviously, you're doing this for other people, but I do it, I do it all myself. I do most of my garden work to myself. As you can see by my yard, I do it myself. Okay?
I'm in the same boat.
Okay. So I have a patio in which I have wells for the basement, and this thing actually does very well as far as getting in and around the areas to blow this stuff out. I'm not opposed to picking stuff up either and using a rake. I'm a multifaceted person when it comes to the kinds of things, okay? But yeah, so I find it very effective, in my opinion, totally effective for a homeowner, perfectly fine.
Right. On the noise issue, and again, I'm not the guy who would know, but the claim was made to me that homeowner kind of electric blowers are definitely quiet, and I'm a, a few years ago, converted to an electric mower, and it is way quieter, as well as way better, I might add. But the question was, this new breed of truly commercial-quality gizmos, including some that have a battery pack that you carry as a backpack in order to provide enough horsepower, are, in the view of this person, as loud or louder? So that's the question to dig out.
Well, I can tell you this, and I'll tell you this, we have the same situation in aviation, which is nothing more than a huge leaf blower.
Yeah.
Okay?
Exactly.
What you're talking about?
Really big.
Okay. What you're talking about, there's capabilities of making industrial leaf blowers quieter. They're called hush kits. We put them on aircraft so that you don't have the noise, that you have to worry about too much noise abatement in Westchester County Airport. There is engineering capabilities to make them quieter that way. Anytime you're forcing air at that velocity, you are going to sacrifice one thing, and it's going to be your ears.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay.
There are options.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, obviously, they are still noisy. I mean, the feedback that I got is that they are 20 to 30 decibels quieter, which makes them two to three times quieter than gas-powered leaf blowers. I think the way that sound works is funny, right? Like it, it's not, a small, a relatively small reduction in the number of decimals ends up having a kind of multiplied effect in terms of the experience of sound, is my understanding. I'm not a, I'm not an engineer. So.
All right. We've got one hand up at Zoom, but let's, anyone in the audience would like to speak first, then we'll go to the Zoom folks. Give us your name and address, if you would, sir.
Yep. Brad Serlin, 159 Sorrels Lane. I work from home, and noise, pollution, all those things, my statement is really brief. I'm for the proposed law, which is a partial ban. The last meeting I attended, someone mentioned that this has been spoken about for many, many years, and I feel like it's time it gets done. I personally feel the proposal is soft. However, it's a compromise, and that's what this is all about. Both sides don't seem to be too happy with this proposal, so it's probably going to work, at least as a good first step. And, you know, I think that that makes sense, that at least this is a good place to start. I wish it was stronger, but I totally get it, and I hope that something gets done soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Brown. I'm at 143 Gray Oak Lane. I'm very much in favor of the proposed leaf blower restriction. It's not just about noise. There's considerable evidence that gas-powered leaf blowers cause significant pollution. There's considerable evidence that gas-powered leaf blowers cause significant pollution, both in their emissions and in the, and all the leaf blowers, and the dirt, leaf mold, and feces that they spread. This is a health hazard, especially for those with respiratory conditions, which are becoming more and more common. This is even becoming an issue for global warming. For those of us at home, and I think that's what everybody's been talking about, when the landscape crews invade our neighborhoods, gas-powered leaf blowers are so loud and so disruptive and extremely unpleasant. And I, for one, am not clear what, why we are using them. I am in favor of letting people do whatever they please, but not when it affects the other people around them. And when it is a health issue and a quality-of-life issue, I am by no means alone in feeling like it's a quality-of-life issue. Then we must balance the rights of some against the negative impact that they have on others. It is the job of good government to protect the people from harmful air and noise pollution. I strongly believe we have a responsibility as a community to try to protect our environment. Gas-powered leaf blowers damage the environment, and their restriction will improve our ecology. So I, I'm very much in favor, and I thank you for considering your neighbors' well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Other speakers in the room?
Hello, my name is Clara Nielsen-Pappish.
We know that, because you're going to France.
I live on 21 Guyan Street, and I'm a student at Pleasantville High School, and I'm currently studying conservation and ecology in the Science Research Program. And I support this legislation, because I believe it would be irresponsible to overlook the environmental impacts of the gas-powered lawnmowers. And besides the clear consequences of the carbon dioxide emissions with global warming, the noise pollution can have extreme detrimental impacts to the surrounding ecosystem, as well as to the human residents. Noise pollution can reduce biodiversity, which can speed up the extinction of certain species, which makes it an important issue, and that one, we, one that we can't ignore, especially with the current state of the environment.
Thank you, Clara. Thank you. Other speakers in the room?
Hi, Helen Mura, 3 Hayes Hill Road, Pleasantville. I've spoken before, spoken also a long time ago, as was alluded to in 2011, when in fact Lisa put the majority of the presentation together to get a leaf blower ordinance going. Nothing has really changed since then in the effects, the detrimental effects of leaf blowers, particularly gas-powered ones. And Mr. Mayor, you mentioned earlier about, we don't really know whether electric is quieter. I did a little bit of research, and I wasn't able to find commercial versus commercial exactly, but every website I looked at, even Bob Villa, said that electric is quieter. And the ranges given were electric blowers run in the 65 to 70 decibel arena, and gas in the 80 to 90. And I think that's going to be true even at the commercial level. I think you're just going to see a 10, 10 to 15 decibel level drop in an electric blower. Pollution is an issue. This is not just about noise. And one of the things that gas-powered blowers do, in addition to all the particulates, which are an issue for people with respiratory problems, and I'm just going to throw in there that COVID is still an issue in our society, and COVID is a respiratory disease. But also ozone is created when the gas isn't properly burned. And this is something, this is just a terrible thing to be generating. There have been ordinances in Westchester for a long time. I didn't go back and see what the oldest one was, but Yonkers has had one since 2007, Sleepy Hollow since 2013, Hastings since 2008. They all differ a little bit. Ours is in line with theirs. Some of them have multiple dates that you can use or not use gas-powered leaf blowers. But I think keeping it simple by having a date, just one date range, makes it easier to manage. And I think our dates are very reasonable. And nobody is suggesting we're going to put landscapers out of business. We're not suggesting landscaping stops. In all these communities, of which there are 20-something, landscapers still work through the summer, doing their job. So I don't feel that this is an issue for preventing business. And it is a social justice issue. The people operating these machines are the closest to them. They're the ones whose hearing is affected, whose breathing is affected, and the vibrations from some of those machines, especially the larger ones, is just crazy. And electric machines just are quieter and do vibrate less. So I think we really need to think about the people using these things, and not just dismiss it as, well, the business won't work, but we have to think about the workers using gas-powered blowers and what, how it affects them. They don't always wear head, ear protection, they don't always wear masks. And they're using them for hours. And I think it would be behooves to protect them, too, as well as our own community, which really suffers from leaf blower noise. And I urge you, I beg you, to pass a leaf blower ordinance as soon as possible. Things get in the way: budgets, or pandemics, or storms. It goes on and on. You never know when you're going to be able to make something happen. So let's move forward with this and not wait for something to be handed to us by the state, because that takes forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Vicki Nielsen, also at 21 Guyan Street. Just sort of repeating what other people have said. I worked from home, even before the pandemic, I worked from home. It's impossible to work when the leaf blowers descend. I switched from a gas-powered lawnmower to an electric one, and it's like night and day for the noise and the smell. And even when our, when they come to our neighbors' houses, like we have to run through our house and close all the windows, and actually put our air conditioning on, because we can't have the windows open, because all the junk is coming in our house, we can't use our porch, we can't use our backyard. I think the person who spoke before, who said, you know, it's sort of, you weigh the rights of one person in the community against another, and with this, it's just really like a sensory invasion, not to even mention all the environmental issues. So I very much support this bill, and thank you for holding this hearing.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrew Butterfield. I live at 197 Broadway. And I wanted to add my voice to the chorus in support of the ordinance, the new ordinance reducing the use of leaf blowers in Pleasantville. As was said, I think, two meetings ago, a leaf blower, the sound of a leaf blower carries approximately half a mile. And in Pleasantville, most of us have rather small lots, which means that that sound impacts dozens of people. In my case, there are at least 15 or 20 houses whose lawn work I hear on a regular basis. I'm sure there are other people who hear even more than that. And so the major conflict is between the sound and the fact that we live mostly in, in small plots. And, and then there's the issue of balancing of the rights. But the, you know, I'm, all four people maintaining their lawns and doing so in a way that they see appropriate, and doing so in a way that is the most labor and cost-efficient manner. And I don't have an objection to that. My problem is that what happens in one lawn doesn't stay at the, at the borders of that lawn. It impacts, it, it travels, as already said, half a mile. And it can be so loud, as many people have said this evening, you can't hear yourself in, in your own house. And, you know, one of the basic ideas, going back all the way to Roman law, is that you are the king in your house. You get to determine, as long as it's legal, you can do whatever you want in your house, which means you have the right of self-determination in your house. And that's drastically impinged when somebody else, the noise that somebody else is making is interfering with your right to, to do work, or to teach, you know, help your kids with their homework, or to take a nap, or watch TV, or any other normal activity. So, you know, I don't have the right to go into somebody's house and say to them, you can't work now, because I don't feel like you should be able to work now, or you can't watch TV now. But other people, the, the noise is so severe when a team of leaf blowers arrives at somebody's yard, you know, five guys going at once, you can't do anything. As someone said a moment ago, they put on their air conditioning, they closed the windows. I've done that, I've put on music and the air conditioning and closed the windows, and you can still hear it. So I think it's a real intrusion in, in the, in, in the well-being of, of the citizens of Pleasantville, and our, the communal spirit that makes it such a lovely community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other speakers in the room? All right, Lou Doreo had his hand up. You there, Lou?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, I also would like to voice my, my support for the ban. And I agree with the one gentleman, it is a compromise, because the times of, there is no need to blow in the summertime. They're blowing grass clippings, they're blowing pebbles. There's not a need for that. We put up with it in Foxwood enough as it is when the fall comes, because we've got so many trees here. It's just continuous. I had to teach my classes from, from inside for two years, and for two years I had to put up with this noise. The decibel level was continuously in excess of 93, 94, and that's me reading it from within my house. Last week, I got a phone call, I had to go in the bathroom to hear the person on the other end. When, when they come around our property, there are two backpack blowers, two push blowers, and a riding blower, and they're all together. And, and I felt like I was trying to, I was back on my aircraft carrier then, when I was in the service. It was, it, the noise is just outrageous, the smell. And they're, they're just blowing things on the, from the ground, all over, in the air, in your cars, on your cars, in your house. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that, that we get a reprieve from the noise and the pollution of, of these instruments for just the summer months. I don't think that's an imposition at all. Along the lines of, I don't believe our village ordinance on noise has a decibel level.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't? You know, when, when you were speaking, Nicole, about there's also, you know, a level of noise that comes from the electric blowers. Maybe that's something that can be looked at as far as setting a decibel level, so that any blowers that exceed that level, whether they be electric or gas, would be considered to be unnecessary or unreasonable noise. The Larchmont, picking out one community, they have a total ban. And they also are limiting electric blowers for the month of April and for the period of October to December. So in addition to totally banning the, the gas ones, they're also putting a limit on, on electric ones. And I agree, Nicole, this, this is the direction not only New York is taking, California is already looking at trying to ban cars, gas-powered cars, in the near future. So I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for the summer months to be devoid of having this pollution, both noise pollution and air pollution. I am in total favor of this ordinance. I wish it was full, full year, but like that one gentleman said, we do have to make compromises.
Thank you, Lou. Is there anybody else in the audience?
Jennifer Froly, 36 Broadway. I've been a resident and a taxpayer in this village for 33 years. And somehow, I feel, once again, that the outside people, the, I know some of the people who live here are lawn people, but the outside people are trying to tell us what to do, that we should have this, this unlimited access for them. I have paid my taxes. I like to sit in my lawn, I like to use my outside space during the summer. I really would appreciate having a ban, so that when I want to have a birthday party for my mother, my 83-year-old mother, at, you know, 5 o'clock or 4:30, I'm not drowned out by the armies of leaf blowers all around my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Made a snapper, I live in Foxwood also, and I just wanted to add my support to this bill. I wish it were more comprehensive, as, as has been said. You asked about the Foxwood Board. The current board, I don't believe, is as friendly and responsive to, as you are. You're interested in what we think and what we want, and I appreciate that. So if you can do this, then our approach to the board would at least have some teeth. Thank you.
Peter, man? Yeah? So, you know, having listened to this for quite a while, and looking at the draft legislation, the thing that I am most concerned about is giving some relief in the short term to the people of the village. I realize that there may be some things that, you know, once we pass this law, and I'm going to suggest that we amend it, so that the Saturday rules take effect immediately. But once we pass this law, it's still a month till that takes effect, and it's a full year before the rest of these rules take effect. That is plenty of time for us to work out any issues about potential decibel limits, about multiple blowers, about whether we are going to allow ride-behind blowers, or helicopter blowers, or aircraft blowers.
The aforementioned chip.
Or anything. I think there, there are other things that we can work out, but if we don't pass this law now, then relief for the summer becomes nearly impossible. If we wait even two more weeks, and you add four weeks until the, till the bill is filed with the Secretary of State, we're in, into July, probably, right? So I would like to move that we amend this bill, and that we pass it tonight, and that we will hear from anybody, you know, with reasonable evidence to suggest that we should amend it before the majority of the bill takes place, just in order to give ourselves a break this summer.
So, just to be clear, if you want to move that, you need to do that not in the context of public hearing, but in the resolution.
Yeah, I'm pre-reading.
Let me, let me just interject. We, we need to finalize the EAF Part 1 and Part 2, so I'd recommend waiting till the next, the next meeting to actually finalize that in final form.
We need to what, sorry?
The EAF, the Environmental Assessment Form.
Okay.
Which, which we can do with the next meeting.
Okay.
So the other piece of that, and to come here wrong, I am sympathetic to the goals here. But your point about speed is about Saturday, because
Weekends and holidays.
Right. Because the proposed, addressing this in two weeks has no significant effect in, to the bulk of the law, right?
Right.
Very, we don't have a choice, we can't vote on it.
Yeah, well, I just, I will add one more argument in favor of not delaying the vote on this, past, you know, the next meeting, which is that the decision that we made to extend the start date of the law, you know, the, the benefit that is derived from that is giving people a full year to prepare, which means that we can get the word out, you know, we can communicate to everyone, we can support potential rebate programs that exist, and we allow people as much time as possible to prepare. So one of my concerns is that if we put it off for too long, we, we kind of lose that advantage that we had set forth for ourselves. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yes, I would just say, I was prepared to vote tonight, and that's what I assumed was happening. And so I was a little surprised when, when we weren't. So I'm, I'm prepared at any time.
So the, the, obviously, this will be on for a vote in two weeks. Though, and the question I just want to pursue is in response to a couple of people who, who were, were quite clear, interestingly, one in favor of a ban and one opposed to a ban, that that without a limitation on the number of blowers in use at one time on a lot, uh, the noise goal is not achieved, in their view, because commercial quality electric blowers, the kind with a battery on the backpack, the whole nine yards, are very loud. I don't know the answer to that, I'll find it.
I think in the summer, they're just not going to be using them much at all.
As much, yeah.
They're just gonna...
Well, there, here's hoping you're right. I, I, I would certainly support that.
So, I mean, for me, I'm in agreement that, logistically, that we should be ready to vote on this in two weeks. Right and everything, Eric, if there's no reason why we couldn't vote on this in two weeks.
Correct. All right, so is there any further comment from anybody in the context of the public hearing before we close it? Up until now, we've adjourned it and reopened it, now we're closing it.
I have an issue that I want to address.
Oh, okay, well, hold on. Geraldine, you haven't spoken yet?
I'm not going to speak for too long.
You're welcome to.
No, you don't want me to.
Hi, I'm Geraldine Stapleton, two and four Edgewood Avenue. My first question was on your voting in two weeks' time, are you going to be just voting, or is there going to be more questions, or is, is it...
I mean, we often engage questions, and certainly it's a public discussion period, but the public hearing process, this is the third episode...
Sure.
...is officially closed, and that, everybody's had their chance to weigh in. You're in that public hearing right now if you want to.
Yes, I'm, I'm late to the rodeo.
That doesn't mean we're not happy to hear from anybody.
No, no, that's fine, I'm late to the rodeo, and, uh, um, I am conflicted about it, to be very honest with you, and, uh, I have a small property, so it's not like I'm in need of the ride-on lawnmowers and the big backpacks, but I did mention it to my gardener, and that was one thing that surprised me, when I, I said to, to him, I said, "Are you aware?" He had no idea that this was taking place, because he's a one-man operation, and his one-man operation is going to double his time. That's his, his feelings, it's like, if, if, if I want him to come in and blow out my lawn with the gas blower and the electric blower, the electric blower is going to take longer. And I'm just wondering, in the long term, all of these products are going to improve. You know, you did get a letter to the board from one of the village residents, as he said, "No skin in the game," but he's talking about the fact that the electrical products are improving, and right now, what we do have on the market's really not going to be very efficient for smaller, uh, for larger properties. And I was wondering if with the electric, are we just going to have an hour, an hour and a half, when it might be forty-five minutes on the property? Let me see, what else? Uh, I do like the idea of some type of time restrictions, and I do like the idea of looking at a day in the week that, I mean, I sit on my porch on a Sunday, and, you know, God bless them, I can hear people cutting their grass and doing all, and it's not necessarily a, a ride-on lawnmower, or it's an electric lawnmower, it's just a push one, but I'd like, it's Sunday afternoon. For me, Sunday afternoon, I like it to be quiet, but what I'm saying is, maybe we should look at restrictions in the long term for certain times, certain hours, but also the impact that it's doing to businesses that really don't have a high profit margin, and what's that going to do to them? And then you're talking about the residents in Foxwood, and how much more will your, uh, expenses increase in Foxwoods? I know you don't think it's going to be a lot, but I'm just, I'm just saying, it's something you should also be looking into, it's what's it going to cost to expand the hours that you do need at Foxwoods, because it is a large property, and it's not the only one in town. I mean, Toll Brothers are up on Washington, there's going to be another development behind Foxwoods, you know, so I'm just pointing out that perhaps we should look at what the costs are involved in the end of the day.
So, and maybe you would have a comment on this, I mean, part of the discussion has been what really is being achieved in, say, July and August? There are no leaves?
No, I, I mean, I, I understand.
I see people kind of blowing stuff around, and in an hour, it looks the way it looked before they started.
Listen, I, I understand, I'm, I'm looking, I saw a property on Sunnyside, and there's a massive ride-on lawnmower, and a guy is cutting a patch that's not much bigger than this area here, and then he rides up the road to the next patch.
Yes, right.
And then they blow everything out onto the road, so perhaps part of it is how we are working with the contractors in the village, as, just as much as like the large companies, that this is their livelihood, this is what they do and have done for many years, and then there's the smaller business that has a pickup truck, a lawnmower, a hedge trimmer, and, you know, it's impacting all of their business also. That's just my feeling.
Yeah, um, uh, yeah, I, just to the earlier piece you said, I mean, there's definitely a cultural shift, you know, that, that we're, we're trying to make happen here, and that won't happen just through legislation, right? So our, part of it is like trying to lead by example, so, um...
And perhaps working with, working with...
Working with landscapers, yeah.
...the people who are coming into town, or living in town, as is my gardener's case, you know?
Right.
I'm just...
Yeah, so our, our Parks Department, um, is working on transitioning to electric equipment. They've been very happy with the equipment that they've purchased so far. I do think that there's a bit of a misconception about the efficacy of the electric equipment because it's changing so quickly.
It is changing, but then...
I think the main, you know, the main driver is going to be the demand, and when you have, you know, like the state of California passing laws like that, the demand's gonna increase.
So where are all the batteries going when we're done?
It's an issue, yes.
That's a separate issue, yeah. I mean, that, that is a, um, that is certainly an issue, and that's also something that's gonna have to improve, right? I mean, they're, they're working on finding ways to recycle the lithium batteries, for instance, um...
But they're only working on...
Forgot my train of thought.
Yeah, but it...
Well, yeah, but it doesn't, I mean, to, just to be clear, this is a little bit of a fallacious argument, because if you look at the entire value chain in terms of pollution, the, the lithium battery does not, uh, does not at all, uh, uh, it's not at all the scale of problem, the amount of pollutants that you're putting into the air by combusting gas, it's not close. I mean, it's an issue for sure, it's something that you have to do, but it's not an equivalence.
You know, we have all, all kinds of issues in the bigger picture, including electric power is clean in places like this, but it's not clean in some of the places it's generated. So, you know, there, obviously, society is moving in positive ways, but there's a long way to go in every column, and if you wait for the perfect solution, you'll, you'll die waiting, right?
And, and this gentleman who spoke, I think he just left, the gentleman who spoke about, uh, going back to Roman days, and...
Yes.
You're, you're sort of king of your own castle. Well, I feel like I'm king of my own castle too, so I don't want to be disruptive to my neighbors, but I do want to maintain a nice property. There's nothing wrong with a rake and a shovel, but then you have to say, "What's your time worth?"
That's why we're trying to make everybody uncomfortable and unhappy.
I will say, I will ma- name no names, but a couple of years ago, I, I interceded in a, uh, uh, neighborhood dispute, uh, with some folks who were very angry at a, a lawn service, and I talked to the lawn service and, uh, was told that they had not had a rake or a broom on, on the truck in years.
On the truck.
Okay, a lawn service that doesn't have a rake or a broom, e- even for the smallest thing, come on, right?
That's the way it is. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine.
Bringing it into the last minute.
All right, you're official, you're, you're official.
And you have a lovely property, by the way, sorry. You have a lovely property.
Hey, Helen.
May I come out?
Yes, you may, please.
I, I just, I just also want, I also want to say, I, I'm not sure if you were a part of the, of the other two public hearings, but we did have, we had extensive conversations with landscapers.
Yes, I know.
In one, in one case, over forty-five minutes back and forth with one, with one, uh, company, and then two other companies at, at significant length as well, so it's been a part of the conversation.
I've been with all the companies, and, and I've had conversations with them, and I do respect how, how my neighbors feel, like, I know how I love this village and appreciate so much about it, but I am feeling like everybody should have the right to take care of their own property, and, but, I think, to that point, we should be looking at perhaps some restrictions on what times, what type of equipment, what size of property might benefit from one or the other.
Helen, you wanted to come in?
Helen Mira, three Hayes Hole Road. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, thank Geraldine for coming up and speaking, and also for mentioning, kind of, as a side issue, it's kind of how we do business, and I think the way, uh, way forward is to treat our properties a little bit more gently and do less blowing, and if that's possible by amending the way you attend to your property, well, it is possible, and I think that as landscapers move into the future with us, that they will find ways to make the yard look just as beautiful, and, uh, without the leaf blower, uh, leaf blowers being used to tidy up paths and stuff, because if they mow differently, the clippings wouldn't land on the path. And also, the, the comment about electricity being cleaner here, uh, which is something we should discuss in another meeting about what's happening to our CCA, um, is, uh, the electricity at any source is gonna be, uh, is provided differently. So if you're referring to, let's say, a gas-powered plant or a coal-fired plant making electricity, uh, sometimes which Con Ed buys, um, at the source, there, there are scrubbers and similar devices in place, just like at our incinerator in Peekskill, which, uh, are there to extract as many pollutants as possible. They're obviously not going to be perfect, but they take out sulfur dioxide, nitrous oxides, mercury, all of which we can't do while you're running a gasoline machine at home. And that applies to a lawnmower and a gas-powered blower. So one of the fabulous things about the recent rebate program has been the number of people who have taken advantage of that rebate and bought electric-powered lawn equipment, and that is one way of reducing pollution by controlling the amount of places where electricity is, uh, where fossil fuels are used to generate electricity, so, that's all.
Thank you. All right, have we said enough? Anybody else? Anybody online? I see no raised hands.
I have a vision for the future where our lawns do not look like an eighties hairband, so...
Thank you for your time and your patience, everyone. We appreciate that.
Related to this?
No.
Okay, hold on a moment then. All right, is, yeah, it's all right, I will get to you right away. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Eric, I did have one question, and that is, this public hearing concerns introductory local law three, uh, but introductory local law three is, uh, jumping ahead about the video conference law. So do we need to renumber either that, number one-seventy-one, or this?
Uh, we can, uh, renumber the other, the other.
Oh, okay.
The other one, okay.
Great. All right?
Yeah, no, it's not an introductory law, the one that we're passing today is actually a local law. The introductory refers to proposed legislation, so sometimes...
Okay, so, but should it become four, and the one we passed tonight is three?
No, no.
Okay, fine, great.
We're, we're staying the course.
All right, comment from the public, welcome back.
I, I have, forgive the crudeness of this.
Come to the, come to the microphone, oh, okay.
I only have four copies, so if you wouldn't mind if I could share?
That's fine.
Don't look at it just yet, let me get back here, and I'll make a little...
Okay, so go to the mic, because nobody can hear you yet.
Okay.
All right, if you could give us your name and address again, if you would.
I will, and, uh, I'd be glad, my, my name is Carl Venona. I'm sorry, my name is Carl Venona. Uh, my family... I live in, on Lake Shore Drive, okay?
Okay, in the village or outside?
No, it's, uh, in Mount Pleasant, it's right off of Church Street, if anybody's unfamiliar with it, okay.
Okay.
My family has been a resident since nineteen sixty-eight.
Okay.
Okay. The, the error I made the other night, which was my fault, was I, I work on airplanes for a living, I have a main job, but I also have a side business that keeps me sometimes late at night. I met my son and my wife for dinner after working late, and I was very tired, so I said to my son, "Take my truck to the train station, I'll pick it up in the morning." Regressively, he had seen signs over here saying that there was a parade and did not equate that with the flea market, or the, you know, the farmer's market...
Yes.
...that happens on Saturday.
Right.
I got up early in the morning, and I, I was still in my sweatpants and shirt, driving down, I didn't have my wallet with me, and I was gonna go pick up my truck, only to find out that it had been towed. Totally understandable, they have to run this in the town. The issue I have with this is, and I told you, I, by the way, let me make one side point, I, I really enjoy the fact that we sworn in new officer that wanted to stand up for the community, because when I expressed my agreements to the police officer downstairs, he was very, very understanding, and actually gave me good guidance on what to do, because he felt I was, he felt I was legitimate, okay, in my complaint. All right, then, that's just a side note I wanted to bring to your point, I, I really appreciate the way that officer tonight said he was gonna serve the community, and that's really important to me. All right, so, I said to the officer, I said, "I'm sure there's a fine with this." He was very, he was very, very generous, he said, "Listen, nobody's going to claim a, uh, nineteen ninety-six Ford Ranger and say they own one, okay? So I understand you don't have your license, uh, with you, but we'll trust that you're who you say you are." I had my phone with me, so I could at least prove something. So he gave me the address of the, um, of the tow company, and I said, it was seven o'clock in the morning, and I said, "All right, I'm just gonna go down there and figure out where this place is," because I had never been on that street in, uh, the town. So I see my truck in the yard, and it's, it's locked up, secure, and it's sitting in a certain position, and, uh, I called, and they said, "Well, we're not gonna have anybody there till nine o'clock, so you can't pick it up till nine." Okay, so I was running some errands on Saturday morning, I went home, got dressed, I did a couple of things, I grabbed my wallet, and, uh, I went back there at nine, and nobody was there. So I called, and they said, "Well, we're running late this morning, and you'll have to come back at eleven, but we'll call you when somebody's there anyway." Okay, I said, "Well," I said, "How much is a tow?" Obviously, I'm gonna have to pay a tow charge, they don't do towing for free. So he said to me, he said, "Well, it's gonna be, uh, three hundred and seventy dollars." Okay, little state, but, okay. Uh, on top of the fifty-dollar ticket too, by the way. I, uh, I call, uh, I go back at noon, rather, and I finally get to the yard, and I find out that you, uh, we don't accept credit card, we only take cash. Well, I got a real problem with that, because I'm a business owner myself, and, uh, I just think that that leaves a very big avenue of being able to do a cash business and actually not claim everything. I want to make sure the town of Pleasantville gets their fair share of that tow fee, okay? And, uh, I'm not making an accusation, but I just think that if we're gonna have a contract with a tow company to make sure that we can do business here in town, we want to make sure that they're legitimate. Okay? They need to be able to take credit cards, plus...
On top of which, you know, three hundred and some bucks, you don't generally have that in your wallet.
Well, let me tell you a little bit about this. In two thousand and eleven, and this is part of the story, I had been rear-ended on one-twenty near the airport, and, uh, the tow company picked up my car and they drove it to Harrison. Well, just I found out that, uh, this tow company, whom, I'm gonna tell you, Patsy Lamanna used to tow cars out of my driveway in the nineteen seventies. Rossi used to do work on my father's car, uh, when he owned the Getty Station down there. Uh, Mr. Koch was my neighbor, who owned the gas station across from ShopRite.
You've been there a long time.
Yeah.
We don't have to do it tonight, so...
All right, sorry, all right.
Get to the point.
Okay, the point is, all right, I'll give you this. All right, first of all, I got a real problem with not paying, not being able to pay by credit card, I could have charged us my business too, by the way.
And I would agree with you.
The second thing, when you, when you take my car, if you would go to this, you'll see that my car got damaged. I just had a clutch put in it by Joe Finelli up in the old village about three months ago. I get in my truck, I put it in first gear, I drive out of the parking lot, I pay the guy the money that I owe him. All right, I get my receipt, and I drive away, I find second gear without a problem. As soon as I went to hit third gear, my shifter's all the way over to the right. All right, my truck is impeccable, nineteen ninety-six, no rust, this thing has a tight shift, I use it for my business at the airport, it's gotta be working correctly if that truck rolls into an airplane and costs me a lot of money. The shifter, I can actually push it over to the side, and I'll show you in the drawing. I had to have Joe Finelli fix it for me, which he only charged me an hour labor, he was able to put it back to the situation where it was. I sign for everything I do on an airplane with my license. Anytime I touch a plane, if something's wrong with it, you can come back to me by my number. The police officer that wrote me a ticket put my number. I called the garage and said, "Who towed my truck?" "We don't know." "He works for you, how do you not know who towed my truck?" All right, this, this really bothered me. There's the thing called accountability, I want to see with the town, is not only we offer this contract, right, to somebody who's on another... on another, uh, from another town, not a local, but the fact that, "I want you to sign for my truck that you did it," because the accountability factor there is that if you're signing for it, you're putting your name on it, somebody can come back to you and question you about this. This, working on airplanes, I'm gonna tell you something, that this truck was damaged by the tow truck company. Now, in Bob's favor, he happened to grow up with Joe Finelli, we're all about the same age, and he actually made restitution to me for the amount of money it cost me to get my truck fixed, so I could use it for my business. He did, he did.
That was to his credit.
Yes, I will say that, that Bob did do that. I'm just saying that there are, we can put a stop to this by a few things. First of all, we're gonna take, we're not gonna take just cash, we're gonna get credit cards, okay? You're gonna be able to pay for it. And two, I wanna know who towed the truck, because I wanna see that accountability. I did it, the police officer that wrote the ticket did it, and now I think that's your, should be the same responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we'll pursue those questions. I, I certainly agree with you, they should take, take credit cards. So at this point in time, uh, there are almost no companies not taking credit cards, so. All right, can we pursue that, Eric?
Yes, sir.
And it also seems reasonable that a tow company wouldn't say they don't know who, who drove the tow truck.
That's right.
Right? All right, any other comment from the public on any subject? All right. For, for expressing that, letting us know. Yes, so.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we did 165, uh, Nicole, resolution 166. Let me get the zoom back to the middle, and I will share my screen. Okay.
All right. Resolve that the board, wait, no, okay, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 23rd, 2022, the minutes are attached.
Is there a second?
Double a second.
Comments, questions, corrections? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. David, 167.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending 2022 as listed below. $2,681 from, uh, A1325.43 Finance Conference to A1325-109 Finance Vacation Buyback. $2,465 from A1325-425 Finance Outside Service to A1325-109 Finance Vacation Buyback. $2,095 from A1325-490 Finance Bank Fees to A1325-109 Finance Vacation Buyback. $2,301 from A1325-490 Finance Bank Fees to A1380-400 Fiscal Agent Fees. $11,912 from A1990.400 Contingent to A11410-100 Admin Full Time. $19,851 from A1990.400 Contingent to A3120-105 Police Overtime. $766 from A1990-400 Contingent to A7410-400 Library Contractual. $725 from A1990.400 Contingent to A9950-901 Transfer to Capital. $18,638 from A310-101 Police Admin Part Time to A3120-105 Police Overtime. $9,039 from A3120-100 Police Full Time to A3120-105 Police Overtime. $4,734 from A3320.100 Parking Full Time to A3310.101 Crossing Guard, uh, Overtime. $995 from A5110.105 Street Maintenance Overtime to A510.100 Street Maintenance Admin Full Time. $187 from Snow Removal Overtime, A5142.105 to A8120.105 Sanitary Sewer Overtime. $2740 from A9035.800 Medicare to A9060.800 Health Insurance, for a total of $79,129. From the Water Fund, $567 from F8340.105 Water TND Overtime to F8320.415 Water SP&amp;P Utilities. An increase in revenue and expense from the Capital Fund, $725 from Revenue Account H050.5031 Interfund Transfer from General Fund to the Expenditure Account H5197.201/18492 Manville Road Quarter Project Local Funds. Payment of Claims is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so, so we're, we've reached the, the end of the fiscal year, so we still have bills move, uh, coming in, and also we're transferring funds, uh, to over-budget lines. The big one is police overtime, kind of a perfect storm. We've had two retirements, and some officers that are, uh, are injured or on medical leave. And then we, we've obviously been in our special event season with, um, uh.
March into light.
Yeah, yeah. Pleasantville Day.
Yeah.
Memorial Day, so, uh, that is the last of it, though. We've, we've closed out the fiscal year on the police overtime.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, and then just the other of note, uh, the admin, the transfer to admin, $11,000 and change. Alyssa's salary, where that position had been actually split between the General Fund, Water Fund, Refuge Fund, since she's come on, the position has adjusted, and she does, you know, a different realm of work than Noreen did, so it's all General Fund, uh, for this year.
We were paying Alyssa from the Refuge Fund.
Yeah, well, we were paying Noreen, because Noreen did some work in the Refuge Fund. In the future, that may change depending on the workload Alyssa takes on, but yes.
Seems like an equity issue.
All right, comments, questions beyond that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Michael, you got off easy here in comparison.
168, uh, resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated June 13th, 2022, for fiscal year 2022, covering check numbers 103868 to 103993. From the General Fund, $137,696.96. Water Fund, $4,174.35. Capital Fund, $34,167.45. Refuge Fund, $680.92, for a total of $176,719.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Back to you, Paul, 169.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract payment of claims dated June 13th, 2022, for the fiscal year of 2023, covering check numbers 103994 through 10411. General Fund, $543,466.27. Special Purpose, $237.50. Water Fund, $22,106.54. Refuge Fund, $20,674.91, for a total of $586,485.22. The description and the payment of these claims is attached to this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 170, Nicole.
Okay. Whereas under general municipal law, paragraph 103, municipalities have the option of making purchase contract awards based upon best value, which allows a municipality to rely upon non-price performance criteria in awarding purchase contracts when the initial expenditure is higher than using a lowest responsibility bidder methodology. And whereas municipalities may elect to award purchase contracts which exceed the statutory dollar thresholds of general municipal law section 103 to a responsive and responsible offer, or on the basis of best value, also known as competitive offering, instead of to the lowest responsible bidder. New York General Municipal Law Section 103A. And whereas in order to award contracts based on best value, a municipality must first pass a local law authorizing the use of best value to determine contract awards as proposed by introductory local law five of 2022. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby schedules a public hearing on June 27th, 2022, at 8:00 PM at Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York 10570, to consider introductory local law five of 2022 to create chapter nine of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning best value procurement.
Is there a second?
Second.
So appended to this is a, a memo from Kenan Bean, our legal counsel, describing, uh, the opportunity to do this, and just, just to be clear to folks, um, in order to accept something that isn't the lowest responsible bidder, you have to go through a, a pretty clear and, and, um, transparent process to explain why. It can't just be, "I like the cut of their gym."
Correct, and, uh, as, as we're now in this environment with long lead times, certainly there's a value add when some, some companies can source equipment or material more efficiently than others, so this gives us more leeway.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. That should be a short public hearing, I think. Uh, 171.
Me.
Is this to be local law three now, or four?
This would be local law three.
Okay.
Whereas on April 9th, 2022, Governor Hochul signed Chapter 56 of the laws of 2022, which creates section 103A of the New York State Open Meetings Law to make permanent until July 1st, 2024. The expanded use of video conferencing by public bodies to conduct open meetings under extraordinary circumstances, regardless of a declaration of emergency end. Whereas under the legislation, for 60 days after the effective date of chapter 56, accordingly through June 8th, 2022, public bodies are authorized to meet and take such action authorized by law without permitting in pub, in public in-person access to meetings, and authorize such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, providing that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding, and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. Whereas the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees desires to adopt a local law to authorize members of the village's local public bodies to participate in meetings via video conference in a manner consistent with the authority granted in Public Law, Public Officers Law 103-A. And whereas introductory local law four of 2022 was proposed on May 9th, 2022, and a public hearing was held and closed on May 23rd, 2022, Monday, May 23rd, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts introductory local law four of 2022 to allow members of all public bodies of the Village of Pleasantville to participate in meetings via video conference, which is to become local law three of 2022 upon its passage, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees here, hereby adopts the conference policy attached heretofu.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the storm of three versus four, you're at top of it.
That's right. Yeah, we track proposed legislation differently, and then when it passes, it gets another.
I believe you.
Explain to me how something is permanent if it lasts for two years.
Right.
In perpetuity isn't long as it uses.
And right, the, the other layer to this is remember, as long as the, the state of New York has a state of emergency in place, um.
That supersedes this.
Yes, boards can operate just totally via Zoom, and, um, it, it actually expires on the, on the 15th, presumably it'll be extended another, uh, 30 days, but, so this really takes effect when the state drops a state of emergency.
Right, but it doesn't extend past 2024 either way, right?
Right, presumably, well, we'll see what the world, what the world.
In New York State politics, that is, you know.
It's forever, right? It's one term of assemblyman.
Yeah, right.
But no matter what, it's a positive development, so. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 172, Michael.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the notice of retirement for John Listwan, Police Lieutenant, effective June 15th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
So worthy of note, uh, we had a ceremony on Friday for John Listwan, who, uh, rose through the ranks here in the Village of Pleasantville, starting as a patrolman in 1994, and being promoted to sergeant, and, uh, later to lieutenant, uh, served us for 28 years in that role. He, and is, uh, marching off to at least a part-time life out west, uh, in a manner that I think he has dreamed of, uh, likely for a very long time, so, uh, we wish him the best, uh, appreciate a 28 years of good service. It will be hard to live up to the spit and polish that John Listwan delivered, uh, as an officer of the Village of Pleasantville. Quite a legacy to leave. All in favor?
We're out west, is he going?
Colorado. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 173, Paul.
Resolve that the Board, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of John Petroni as the part-time bus driver, job code 204, at the hourly rate of $20, with retroactive hiring date of June 4th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Senior bus?
Yes, yep, he's on board, uh, he started earlier, so we wanted to get that on the record.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Nicole, 174.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, location code 40104, I didn't realize we had a location code, hereby establishes the following as standard workdays, park foreman, and will report days worked to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the timekeeping system or the record of activities maintained and submitted by these members to the clerk of this body. Park foreman, eight hours, is that what that means?
Right, eight hours per day. Is there a second?
Second.
And we, yeah, we're required to, uh, to pass a resolution, uh, we did that previously, but that, uh, park foreman mistakenly had the seven hours, um, instead of eight.
It's singular in the resolution, and then plural below, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, it was taken from the last resolution, but we can, we can amend in a minute.
I think it's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. David, 175.
Resolve the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes a village administrator to execute the membership agreement with the Education Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is a, uh, a cooperative pricing system like Sourcewell, um, which we are a member of, it allows us an additional, um, agency to, to source materials through, particularly this time around, where finding that they offer, they have vendors that offer, uh, truck parts that we need, so, uh, that are difficult to come by these days.
Fun.
Okay, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
175, 176. Who was it?
Uh, it's me. Resolve that the Village Board of Trustees authorizes the village administrator or designee to execute the custom sponsorship agreement for the Pleasantville Music Festival attached heretofu with Scarborough and Tweed, Pam Nation, The Refreshed Home, and Valone Printing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Continuing our, uh, work through this as Bruce Figler and his team, uh, gain sponsorship agreements with all of these folks. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, get tickets, coming up Saturday, July 13th.
Nine.
Nine, sorry, I have 13 in my. See, I was just testing. 177, Paul. I think you can say as stated in the record.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following stipends for services performed in support of the 2002 Pleasantville Music Festival, as stated in the record, there's a list there, and you can find that by reviewing the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So just to be clear, there are, uh, modest stipends to, to, uh, folks who are essentially, uh, chairs or co-chairs of the various departments, uh, and more significant stipends, obviously, Bruce Figler, Executive Director, received his stipend of $10,000, uh, for his essentially year-round work on this venture. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. That is the end of our regular resolutions. Any new business from anybody?
Um, I just wanted to update everyone on October 1st on the block party that we're trying to do.
Oh, great.
Um, so we've, we've narrowed down Washington Avenue with, uh, that's where the car show would be, and so we have about 47 cars that are willing to participate. Uh, it's just. Just last weekend, I saw them at the Royal Shopping Center parking lot, that's where they usually do those shows a lot, so they're very enthusiastic about doing that. Lucho is looking to have a DJ right outside his pizzeria, he's got the Italian Ice, and apparently some kind of special with the pizza he's selling, something about an old-school price of like, when he opened, or something like that, something like that.
That sounds cool.
Well, it's just like Dish Network. Prices never change.
The fire department has also agreed that they want to participate, being that it's Fire Prevention Month, they're looking to essentially have the fire truck, as that will be kind of like the end of where the street kind of closes off, kind of the same way that we close it when we do the firemen parade.
Yes.
So they're on board with that, so it seems like Washington Avenue seems to figure it out on that end. I had a meeting with Eric, with Chief Costner, and he said that, you know, we'd have a police officer on that side of Washington Avenue, that's kind of just patrolling the street. And so Manville will still be open, so it'll just kind of have to be, I asked the chief if he thought we needed a crossing guard or someone, but he says, we have lights, and, you know, people will kind of have to monitor that going from Wheeler over to Washington and back and forth. So we have that. And the question, I want to make sure that for the next part, is that as we spoke about closing the parking lot that belongs to Holy Innocence now, I'm not sure if that's something we asked him first, or so it would be, because the Holy Innocence parking lot is essentially going to be, I don't know if you remember last year, how when Alan from Soul Brewery provided us a map of the vision that he had for October for us last year, which was essentially tables in the middle, different tables set up with chairs.
So you're talking about the parking lot between the bagel store and Holy Innocence?
Exactly, that.
So that's not the one they own, they own the one.
They own the one on the corner of town.
Oh, okay, so that's ours, okay, perfect, and that helps, makes it my Jesus, so it's ours, so.
Yes.
So we're looking to.
I was trying to imagine the bagels outside the church there.
So what we're looking to do is, is we have a map ready of what we're going to use, and essentially, like we said, is putting in the middle, tables and chairs, and then all around that area is where the tents for anyone that's going to be selling food or alcohol is going to go there. Now, the sale of alcohol, the way that we're looking to work at is that in both the entrances, coming out of Bedford Road, right next to the bagel store, and walking in the alley right next to Soul, there'll be security there that essentially is checking for people who would like wristbands, specific baby wristbands that can show that you've shown your ID to security, that's the only way you can get it. You can only essentially have an alcoholic beer into that whole area, so if people.
You can't take it back out.
Exactly, just get stopped right there, that's where security is on both ends. Obviously, people will have kids, if they're going to eat, because it's an eating area, but it's also.
All the food would be in there, though?
Yeah.
None on the street?
None on the street, the only people would have it.
So just in that parking area, or also on Wheeler?
Well, on Wheeler, there would be food, but just within the permits that people have outside of the restaurants, essentially, so the part that goes into, like, for example, Foley's wants to be a part of doing food and alcohol, so they're already going to have that, and then this opens it up for old village places like Kraft, or anyone else that wants to come down and do things like that.
Is Wheeler blocked off too, in addition to Washington?
Yeah.
So Manville runs, but then Wheeler's blocked and Washington's blocked, is that right?
Correct.
And who's serving license is, are each of these entities that are serving alcohol operating under their own license independently, so many people get a special one-day permit?
Exactly, so in discussion that I had with Alan about this, I've created a committee that's going to be more likely spearheaded by Alan, by Mari Amato from Foley's, I'm going to be speaking to Rob from Lucy's, the different businesses that want us on alcohol, and essentially what they're going to do is, they're going to submit the exact same permits that they get for the day, and they have to designate exactly where it is that they're going to be, they have to designate what security's going to be there, they have to have, I believe, a, some kind of bathroom, like porta-pies or something, it has to be in that area, so we're working on the logistics of all that, but I just wanted to make sure that the village is on board with us being able to use that lot. I was trying, I thought it was Holy Innocence, so I didn't want to go through all this planning and then not be able to use that day, that lot, so that's where we're at right now.
So it's our lot, and as long as it's sealed off at the Wheeler end, you can't use it for cars and parking anyway, right?
Yeah.
Unless we, for one day, a lot of people to exit onto Bedford, which the county would be unhappy about.
Yeah.
So my only question about that is, just, you know, multiple purveyors of alcohol, my only question there is how we, likely not too big a problem, but we certainly periodically have problems with people who overconsume, and in a circumstance where there are so many places outside on our property to buy alcohol, we just need to understand how that would get managed, so each purveyor is responsible for making sure they're not serving somebody who appreciates their way.
And they're going to work together as a team. We've already also looked at professional security guards that either have done this at different, Alan has gone to different places in different towns and counties where they've had professionals, or either retired police officers who have more experience in making sure IDs are valid.
And the places serving alcohol would pay for that?
Correct.
Okay, so.
And then I have Jacob Burns is interested in being a sponsorship, having sponsorship in the event, so the proceeds that we're going to get from that and from the chamber is to then, for example, get things for, we're trying to get some music, live music, we're trying to get to be on Wheeler Avenue, like face painters, balloon, kind of like the way Pleasantville Days had, that had different entertainers on Wheeler, for like, just to have that available, and maybe a kids' area, things like that.
And what hours are you thinking?
So we'd like to close, our proposal is to close from twelve P M. until about nine. Now, that day, just to remind everyone, is homecoming, so I think there will be a lot of people out and about, going to different games, it'll be, I think, a really good way to encourage this, kind of show Pleasantville can be a walking town, so if you're walking to the games, you walk down into town, you go get food, you go hang out, the football game, I think, starts at six thirty, some people will leave from there, but this is going to be promoted as not just a Pleasantville event, but more the neighboring cities and villages to come kind of see what our village has to offer, so I think it's going to be a showcase of what Pleasantville really is about nowadays. I think especially looking at the new building that's coming up, you know, a lot of people from other towns that haven't seen it are really going to kind of see and showcase what we're showing, we're looking to have Saturday be the day, but if it rains or something Sunday would be the rain day. That way, everyone can plan accordingly, because obviously with restaurants, they have to order extra food, extra things, and we don't want that to go to waste.
So you're under the hood of this, I just do wonder, nine hours is a long time, so that's a.
So I mean, that's where we're starting right now, but I mean, it can get, it can get changed, if anything, move up a little bit later.
So that turns us into two shifts over time, right?
Yeah.
So that's just something to think about, so.
Yeah.
Not that we wouldn't do it, I'm just, just.
I'd say like the traffic you got on the almost impromptu, I mean, I know it was a lot of work, but like the less planned one was unbelievable, so I think we would probably support the hours.
Right, I mean, I can think, and obviously being mindful of what's happening, and, you know, yes, there's one aspect, that there would be alcohol being sold, alcohol sold all over the village, you know, in those times, and people were hoping that come out are responsible about that, and we are encouraging this to be a family kind of event, so that's also why we moved over the name to Block Party, and not, you know, not Beer Fest kind of thing, or Oktoberfest, so I think in that aspect, people hopefully with their families or their children are coming out more, and it kind of leaves the whole day so that, you know, there is more of a family feeling at some point, and then, you know, later on, they go home, and then you have like a couple older crowd, that's where you would probably end by like nine or so. And then people can kind of disperse to wherever they want to go, people are coming back from the football game, and then they can go back, and I think just support, all the businesses will get better and come out.
Are you getting the dunking booth for the mayor?
So.
Where would the, where would the music go?
So we'd like to have a stage on that area where the parking lot is, where the food will be, we'd like to put a stage there, or some kind, or.
If you did that, though, does that kind of draw restaurants that are trying to serve out of their bricks and mortar location, don't get much activity, right?
Right, I mean, ideally, what I'm trying, I'm only trying to keep it at people who are businesses that are in Pleasantville, definitely have to be a part of the Pleasant Chamber for Commerce, and just getting them to kind of draw, because they always seem to be somewhat neglected, because we haven't been able to have things, or, for example, up in Old Village, or even towards like McDonald's and those restaurants, you know, a lot of those aren't part of the chamber, so if they're looking to come out, I would imagine there not going to be a lot of beer vendors, because there's just a lot more to do for that, so I would just think it'd be more getting those vendors to get those permits to be able to sell food. We're aware that it has to be done well, because I'm not sure if you guys knew, but at Pleasantville Day, the Department of Health was here, they did show up, they went and checked, the, one of the high school classes who were graduating, they went and checked like their refrigerator to make sure that it was enough, and it was cool enough, essentially, so we're aware that they can come by, and everything like that.
And they come to the music festival every year.
Yeah, so with that in mind, obviously, you know, we kind of, last year, I think, got really lucky with how it kind of went, it was very promptly, but this year, I think, if we could do it the right way, and we've got enough people, and we're doing it with enough time, right? Last year, I think at this time, we were just talking about it, but it wasn't really an idea, but now, we're trying to really get everything concrete and set by July, you know, who's doing what, getting all the permits, so that by August, all permits should start coming in, and then we get it all set up, we have two months to essentially make sure that we manage who's going to run things, and the shifts that people are going to be on, and all that.
What about seating areas, are you going to have any seating on Wheeler?
Yeah, we have the ability to do that, exactly, so, I mean, if people want to buy their food and go over there, yeah, definitely, last year, we put a couple tables right by Soul, just because everyone seemed to be in that area, but yeah, we could definitely do that as well, and, because the idea is, it's not just to, we're going to, we kind of want to draw people throughout the whole area, so I was telling you. Lucio's would have, the DJ that he's going to have over there, but I'd like to put some kind of music, as we had last year, by Nona Square, over there, that's kind of the interest on Wheeler there, and then we'd have some kind of music up by where the food area will be, and we'll kind of, you know, space out when people are performing, so it's not like, you know, people going to different areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the idea of having it be kind of circulatory, you know, is nice.
So you just answered one of my questions, I think, but, so there's a Saturday mass at Holy Innocence, and I was just envisioning if there's an amplified band playing, like, right outside the door.
Do you know, I can look up that and just make sure that there's no one at that point in that area.
That's what I'm getting at, if you're going to do multiple, you could stagger, if you could stagger it.
Yeah, we can stagger and draw.
Select the right music.
Just, yeah, just select the right music, exactly, no, but I just, I could foresee.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, I was told about the mass, I was concerned when I thought that maybe they would be like, well, we have park, we need parking for the mass.
I think the noise would be the bigger, bigger factor.
So I think that, yeah, we can, we can definitely move that around.
Because it's already going to be noise, just with people out there, talking.
No, I think that's easy to do, just stagger and make it.
All right, well.
They keep their masses pretty tight to an hour, so it's only an hour you got.
Okay, that's easy to do. So that's where we're at, I mean, it's a big undertaking, but I think that, you know, I'm really proud of what our downtown is becoming, and I want to showcase that more, you know, I want to make it for, you know, for all these buildings that are coming up, they're going to need people to live there, and I want people to see and say like, wow, this place is awesome, I mean, I've gone to, last Sunday, I went to the, Tarrytown had a street fair, which was really, really well done, and it's on a hill, and they were able to do such a good job, and they just, they have a lot going on, and I was like, we could do much better, we have the room, we have the space, we have vibrant downtown, and, you know, there's a lot of good stuff like that.
That's great.
Yep, so that's, yeah.
All right, so the name is the Block Party?
Yeah, Pleasantville Block Party, it's going to be this year, more likely that sort of a mistake, but we think that it's a little more family-friendly, we categorize it as that.
So is this our Block Party resolution approval? You mean signatures from?
You have to get fifty percent of it.
And it's October first?
October first, yeah.
All right.
Just to let you guys know, Peter and I went to an event at the library last week, we've been, I've been working on a small committee, on a design committee for a major renovation of a library, the architects have done a great job.
Really a great job. Same footprint, no change in the outside.
Same footprint, no change, but dramatic change in the inside.
I was mightily impressed, so thank you, Dave.
Yeah, yeah, so it's really exciting, I think they're going to start to figure out how to bring it out to the public soon, and, but the good news is that I think they can do a substantial part of this on their own, and they just, there's going to be some gap, but it's not, hopefully not going to be huge.
They benefited from good cash management, and also some requests, including an unexpected one, so.
Yeah.
It's really, it's great stuff.
So cool.
Great stuff.
I have a little piece to share, which is that there's a garden on Manville Avenue, it's an island that was created by Jeff at one point, that kind of falls outside of the beautification committee projects, and so it had been neglected for a while, it was designed by Carolyn Ramsey, I don't know if you know her, she's a master gardener, and it was originally designed to be kind of an educational garden, it's primarily planted with native plants, and so it's sort of a pollinator garden too, anyway, had been neglected, and Adina McGinley, who's a local resident, was starting to take it upon herself to weed it, but today, the Parks Department came and did a big cleanup and added a bunch of plants, so I would check it out.
Which one is that?
Sorry, where is it? Right by the Rebecca Lane parking lot, where Manville widens out there, that triangle.
Yeah, so if you go, you know, up towards the Old Village, where it gets wider there on the right, yeah.
Cool. I have one update, just on Manville Road, as of today, the PCI, the company that won the bid, submitted the highway work permit to DOT, which has been.
Great.
Oh, good.
Quite the process, but now, we're hopeful that DOT turns that around rather quickly, so we're tracking to an early July start.
Great. How long do we think the construction will last?
That's the multimillion-dollar question, we are going to be running into lead times specifically for the traffic light here at Manville Memorial, so, but the goal was to get that into DOT, so they could, you know, cross the T, dot the I's, and then we'll have a clear schedule to start communicating.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, anything else? All right, let me just quickly, didn't get announcements out at the beginning because of our various events, and just a shout out to the community, to the Fantry Nickel American Legion Post, to the high school band and chorus, and to the Brownies, and to the Boy Scouts, and to all of you, and to our colleagues on the school board who participated in the Veterans, in the Memorial Day Ceremony, and in what is always a big week for Pleasantville, the fire department parade came roaring back after a two-year hiatus, and that was a great, great thing, and a whole lot of logistics and organization goes into that, shout out to the Pleasantville Memorial Fire Department for that. And get yourself to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com, and buy tickets June, July nine, coming up soon.
That's right.
Alyssa's counting down the dates. All right, is there a motion to move into executive session on matters of real property and personnel?
So we hope.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, thank you all, if you are still with us, or if you are watching again, we'll be back in two weeks on June twenty-seventh.